Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five Board of School Directors Committee Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Emily Evans.
Here.
Sharon Geibl.
Here.
Monica Gronigal.
Here.
Jim Happ. Jen Hill.
Here.
Gerald Enman.
Here.
Michelle Mitchea, here. Leslie Rizzi.
Here.
John Tatko.
Thank you. We have a quorum and can proceed. We'll start the evening with communications. Ms. Hill.
Yes, I would like to call up Mr. Turpin for the High School Student of the Month Awards.
Well, good evening, everybody. Tonight, we're going to recognize our December and our January winners for the high school for December, for Student of the Month. Again, these are all voted on by our teachers in the high school. So students, when I call your names just coming up, you're going to get a certificate from Mr. Mott, and then just stand in the center, and then once everyone's here, we'll take a quick photo. December's theme was mindful and supportive. So some of our teachers' comments shows that our teachers really know our students really well, and some of them are very personable. So I'm not going to read the teachers' comments tonight. I will share the teachers' comments with the families individually. But our ninth grade winners for December, again, for mindful and supportive, Lillian Stragan and Brennan Viscinich. Sorry, I knew I was going to get that wrong. Lillian was nominated by Mrs. Woods, and Brennan was nominated by Mrs. Santa and Mr. Bowen. So students, when you hear those teachers' names, make sure when you see those teachers tomorrow in the building, you thank them for your nomination. Our tenth grade winners were Peyton Ward and Matthew Haslett. So come on up. Peyton Ward was nominated by Mrs. Santa as well, and Matt Haslett was nominated by myself. Our eleventh grade winners, Sylvia Ruck and Lorenzo Pesolano. Sylvia was nominated by Mr. Langeli, and Lorenzo was nominated by Mr. Dickey. Our twelfth grade winners, Olivia Henderson and Chris Dankovich. Olivia was nominated by Ms. Gia Maria, and Chris Dankovich was nominated by Dr. Wargo and Mr. Majors. Our January theme was positive attitudes. And our ninth grade winners for January, Hannah Hoy and Easton Ward. Both Hannah and Easton were both nominated by Mr. Bowen. Our tenth grade winners, Riley Voico and Michael Humphrey. And both Riley and Michael happened to both be nominated by Ms. Goodson. Our eleventh grade winners, Mia Voyland and Noah Carney. Mia was nominated by Ms. Pritchard, and Noah was nominated by Mr. Dickey. And if you have not met Mia, Mia has the best attitude in our building. She's awesome. Congratulations. Our tenth, twelfth grade winners, excuse me. Twelfth grade winners, Harmony Martin and Ryan Fessler. And again, both of our twelfth grade nominees were nominated by Mr. Langeli. So once again, these are our winners for December and January. Again, December was mindful and supportive, and January was positive attitudes. One more time, folks. Thank you so much, guys.
Oh, okay. So now I'll have Mr. Mott, if you could do the presentation of the High School Think Award.
At this time, I'd like to call Cameron Stumps to the stage to introduce our Think Award for the second nine weeks.
I voted Miss Santa for the Think Award because she always does a great job of making class time enjoyable and fun. She's also super happy to answer any questions we have. She's super approachable, and you can really tell she loves what she does.
Come on down, Mrs. Santa. It is an award. Can one of you take, can one of you take a picture, please? Justin went up to the basketball game. I'm also going to share some of the other comments that the students made about Mrs. Santa. She's always trying to put everyone in a good mood. She's the sweetest and kindest teacher there has ever been. She's always helps us with our work when we're done, and Mrs. Santa is good at explaining her work. She makes sure that all steps are explained as much as possible. She is much, she is a very helpful teacher. She's so sweet and kind. She's very understanding, and she's always willing to help as much as a student needs. She helps me with, me with my work. And the final comment is, she's very good at her job, always helps her students, always and helps is all in caps. So congratulations, Mrs. Santa. Working with you is a true pleasure, and this is definitely a deserved award.
Congratulations, Miss Santa. Very deserved. Congratulations to all the students and Mrs. Santa. We'll move on to public and community relations. For Board Policy nine oh three, public comment in board meetings, members of the public must preface their comments with their name, municipality, and group affiliation if appropriate. All comments should be addressed to the presiding officer and be relevant to agenda items or matters that may come before the board. Required timelines must be observed prior formal request ten minutes, informal request five minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Move to approval of the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting minutes, the reorganization meeting, and the regular meeting. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, we will approve, and we will move to the superintendent report. Ms. Workman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Geibl. If we could, if the board could go down front, I do have a presentation.
Okay. This presentation is just to give our Board of Directors and the community and anyone who may be listening in just an idea of our progress in meeting our goals and some of the strategies and initiatives that we've undertaken. So I think most of you know, certainly the Board of Directors did, or do. Last year, we did a book study on the book Arrows, A Systems-Based Approach to School Leadership. And hopefully, what I share with you tonight will give you a little bit of understanding of that book. So we have been trying this past year to align arrows, and let me give you a really good, let me get into this, and hopefully you'll understand. So this has been Freedom's history. This was actually a classroom door a couple of years ago, and I see Miss Santa nodding her head. So each one of the pieces of paper signifies a program or initiative that was implemented here in the district. Most of these were a one and done. So they were initiated, and then the next year, they were gone. So here today, gone tomorrow. What this signifies is a lack of a vision, lack of resources, lack of an action plan, lack of progress, and therefore confusion. There's disengagement by staff, students, parents. No one knows what is the topic of the day. But lack of progress is the most important. So after reading the book, we decided we really needed to take a look at all of the initiatives that were on that door, that classroom door, and our current initiatives, and begin to focus our arrows so that we weren't going all over the place, but that we had a vision. We're working on the skills with our new curriculum, and we just adopted a new math resource. We are aligning our resources. We have an action plan, and we are beginning to make progress. So we have the three arrows, which we shared earlier in the year, culture, curriculum, and instruction, and support. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a little bit of information about each of these and some of our celebrations. Have we reached each goal? No, we haven't, because it's a work in process. But everything we're doing, we're trying to stick with these arrows and not bringing in additional programs, initiatives for our teachers or our students. We want to strengthen what we've put into place. But it starts with our administrative team, and consistency is so very important. So you can see that two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two was my first year here. It was Mr. K. Part's first full year as principal. Since that time, following year, we have a new high school principal. And the next, in that same year, we had four different middle school principals. In the third year, Mr. Griffith came on board. In the fourth year, luckily, our administrative team is the same, although last year, I did forget, sorry, Isaac. We did have a new special ed director. And then this year, we have a vacancy with our business manager, which impacts, also impacts my time and the time of the administrators. So with consistency, we begin to set clear expectations, which I think we're trying to do with all of our staff and students, confidence, trust, belief, safety. And you can see, and I think those of you that have been on the board, remember that probably in two thousand and twenty-three, we began to see little inklings of progress in elementary school as far as test data. And yes, it's only one data point, and we know that, but so often, we're measured by those data points. So we began to see that because Mr. K. Part had developed trust, relationships with his staff, and beginning to change the culture. And this year, if you remember back to December, he showed quite a bit of growth with his student data. Then the high school, so Mr. Mott is in the same position, that this year, we're beginning to see progress. Huge celebration was that ELA showed the greatest growth on Keystone's in Beaver County. And Miss Santa, you all showed great growth in algebra. So last year, with Mr. Griffith coming on board, he focused his first year on what he needed to do. He needed to change the culture. We know that he needed to spend a lot of time to get the student discipline under control, and that's what he did. And this year, he's beginning to focus more on the academics. So let's look at some of our, the arrows. So culture. And by no means is this a complete list. These are some of the highlights that we felt was important to, to speak about. So our culture, underneath our arrow, some of the, not the objectives, but kind of the benchmarks, or the, the skills and strategies, we want to make sure we focus on would be effective and timely communication. Each principal has developed an information hub. It's sort of a one-stop deal where teachers can go and get the information that they may need, rather than having to go to this website, or this email, or this flyer. So each of the principals have developed that. And any of you parents who don't ride certain buses, you may not have heard my voice at all this summer, or this, this year, telling you that bus so-and-so is going to be late, because we are now streamlined the all calls. We're able to designate just students riding per se on bus, like thirty-two. We can call just those parents and not call the eleven hundred and sixty-eight other, or parents that, that are getting the calls at six o'clock in the morning. Positive and respectful relationships with stakeholders, continued our use of Peach Jar. Our administrative team are present at school and district events, and they all support each other. You'll see all of these guys at football games and basketball games. Positive relationships with parent organizations. Our principals are great at working with their PTOs, PTAs, and parent advisories. They revise their open house to be more open to the parents, have the teachers having more time with teachers. I'm sorry, the parents having more time with teachers. And as you saw tonight, the recognition of students and teachers. And this year, I believe, for the first time, our seventh and eighth graders were participating in the marching band, which created a stronger band. Students beginning to build those relationships with the other band members and just creating a better atmosphere at our football games. Emphrates. Okay, in the area of, the support arrow. We have restorative projects being used in the elementary schools and middle schools. And what this is, when a student receives a discipline referral, then that student will have to do some sort of a project and present it to his or her teachers to talk about what he or she learned as to why that behavior is inappropriate, who it impacts, how it impacts, and how the behavior can change. And we are continuing to be recognized at the state level for our PBIS programs. We're revising the process of the, of our multi-tiered systems of support, and those are small group meetings with our faculty and counselors and psychologists, if need be, to talk about students in need, whether it's behavioral, academic, something they need in their home life. And then we assign interventions, and we're, we work with the families and the teachers. We have two school nurses, both who are RNs. One is a certified school nurse, and the other is an RN. Social, emotional, behavioral supports and meeting student needs. Last month, Hope Bennett, the counselor at the high school, spoke in depth about the mental health support, so I'm not going to go too deep into that. Our meeting student needs, Inspired Hearts and Hands is a nonprofit group out of Butler County. But for the last two or three years, a couple of times, I think it's three times during the year, will provide clothing, school supplies, and meal boxes for our families in need. New Swickley Township also supports our students in needs from New Swickley, and then we continue to receive the power packs from the Rebus Foundation. Okay, curriculum and instruction. Next week, Bill Deal will give a more in-depth presentation on the curriculum and where we are with writing of curriculum. His, he said his was going to be lengthy, so we thought we would split our presentations up not to overwhelm you in one evening. Professional learning communities. Back in the summer, I presented sort of an action plan for implementing professional learning communities. And if you remember, the administrators and I, that was one of the purposes of the book Arrows. But also, we've been out visiting other schools who have implemented professional learning communities and done some of our own research, and we had an expert from Virginia who was working with us once onsite and then a couple of times virtually. So within our action plan, it was defining PLCs with our faculty, and yes, we've done that. It was creating norms that our teams and our departments are going to work with, and yes, we've worked through, and we've done that. We've defined the why. There are four critical questions through the work of a professional learning community. We, again, we didn't want to overwhelm our teachers, so we started with just the first two. And those two questions are, what do we want our children to learn, and how will we know when they are learning? So that goes right along with drafting our curriculum. And the how will we know when they are learning, it also goes in with, with our curriculum. But it's also a good segue as we begin to look at the assessments that we're providing to our students, making sure that each teacher knows what a student must demonstrate in order to master the skill or demonstrate the knowledge he or she has learned. So our groups meet consistently with explicit common agendas, and they follow the norms. And we will be, we haven't started yet, but we will begin looking at developing a common language. And with Miss Santa here, it's a good example. So middle school algebra teachers have to be using the same language for the mathematics skills and processes as Miss Santa uses. So we have to develop that language so that if Miss, and it's been many, many years since I've had algebra, sine and cosine and all that stuff, but whatever, however Miss Santa defines a skill, a process, a term, our middle school staff have to do it also, and that's through every content and every grade level, beginning in kindergarten up through grade twelve. And our data analysis teams. And our data analysis teams, data conversations are occurring during PLCs, C&amp;C meetings, and department meetings. It's a little bit more difficult at the high school because we only have, most of the time, just one teacher, teaching at a grade level. But in the future, hopefully, we'll be moving to vertical teaming so that a teacher who is certified as an English teacher and teaching 10th grade can also support the English 9 teacher and the 11th grade English teacher. So there's some other highlights. I meet with the principals at least twice a month as a group and then individually. But they often tell, they always tell me what's going on in their buildings. One of our teach, one of our principals was in a meeting, but also had a scheduled PLC meeting. The first meeting he was called into was unexpected, and it took longer than he had thought it would. So he texted the teachers and said, "You might as well go back to your classrooms because I'm held up." The response was, "No, we've got this. We've already begun the conversations." So that, to me, is huge because what has been reported to me in the past is that our teachers worked in classrooms. Doors closed, they worked on their own. Now we have teachers collaborating, which was why the main, one of the main goals, the first goal of a PLC, we have to get our teachers working together in order to get the work done. Our teachers, our teachers are talking about instruction all the time, whether it's an informal conversation or in a department or PLC meeting. We have targeted academic interventions, which I believe is one of the reasons that our high school showed improvement and showed growth. But we also have those interventions at all three levels. And as I said, our teachers are now talking about the instructional needs. In the past, it was more the behavioral needs of students during those department meetings or grade level meetings. And we have documented academic growth. So what are our next steps? It's really just to continue to align our work. We want to continue strengthening our arrows and moving towards our goal of maximizing student potential. Every student has a different potential, and we need to make sure that that student can reach it. And that's how, that's through the work of the PLCs, our support, our communication and working with parents and each other, then we hope to meet our goal for students. Okay. Thank you.
Next on the agenda are proposed procedures for our therapy dogs. This is for discussion and information. I think everyone is aware that our middle school dog, Ariel, prior to Christmas, had a medical emergency. At that time, we realized we needed to have very explicit procedures written out as to how to make decisions for one of, for either of our dog if they become sick. So you have copies of the proposed procedures. Hopefully, these can go on to the agenda next week for approval. We are looking at routine, or for, I'm sorry, pet insurance. We had developed a committee. We met, they did research, and they have come up with Pet Best Insurance, which is the recommended policy to be purchased for each of our dogs. And it covers the accident and illness insurance, unlimited annual limit, reimbursement of 90%, $1,000 deductible, and the cost is $26.17 per month for, per dog. We have also been very lucky in that Windrose Animal Hospital has generously, generously agreed to support our, both of our therapy dogs. This will cover annual exams, any vaccinations, a year of preventatives such as flea, tick, heartworm, and intestinal parasites, annual tick-borne disease, unlimited medical exams and rechecks, diagnostics and medications, and public recognition for our therapy dogs' role with opportunities for social media acknowledgement. We would also recommend that a set-aside fund of $15,000 for each dog be created to cover emergency medical care. This was the amount that was recommended by the vets. And we have laid out steps that if a medical emergency arises, we have steps that the caretaker would follow. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Diane, did you mention, did you say, and I apologize if I misheard you, I think you said that we have copies of that? We do not.
It's posted on the, on our website. I can get your copies. I'm sorry.
It wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda before I checked, before I came here.
It was there today.
Okay. It wasn't, it wasn't whenever I checked, so I don't know.
Oh, I apologize. I'll make sure you get a copy.
Okay, thank you.
It was an oversight. Yeah, it was sent to her. I apologize.
Diane, I don't know if you know, but the 15,000 for each that they're recommending, I'm just curious why, if we have the insurance, is there deductibles on the insurance? Does it not cover?
There is, there's a $1,000 deductible.
That's like $30,000 to put away for dogs when we're paying for insurance.
Yeah, and I can get, I can get that answer to that question. I'll have Carol send you the copies tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments on that right now? Yeah, we'll have to see it, so probably, maybe, it may need to go on again for discussion next week.
Okay. No problem.
Education, Ms. Michia.
All right, Mr. Mott has some new high school courses he would like to tell us about.
Okay, I'm going to talk about three different classes we're hoping to bring to the high school next year. The first class is a CHS class. It's a U.S. History 1 and 2 class provided by CCBC. Currently, we have one class, we have Western Civilizations 1 and 2 taught by Mr. Langjelli. That's not going away. We're just looking to rotate between the two. Okay, so this year, we're doing Western Civilizations 1 and 2. Next year, we'll do this U.S. class. The following year, Western Civilizations will be back. So we're just looking to rotate. This is just going to be one of our social studies electives. So this will meet our needs for the electives. This, Mr. Langjelli will teach it. He currently has a space in his schedule because he's teaching at Western Civs. So that'll just flip-flop. The U.S. History 1 talks about the beginning of the United States up to 1865, the Civil War, the end of the Civil War. U.S. History 2, which would be the second semester, goes from Reconstruction to present day. Any questions on that class? The next class we're looking at is Modern U.S. History and Civics and Government. So currently, we have Civics and Government. It's a full-year course. What we're looking to do is we're looking to condense that down, and we're looking to introduce U.S. history or modern history. Because currently, what we have in eighth grade, students will take U.S. History 1, which is 1776 to 1865 till the Civil War. Mrs. Porter picks up at the end of the Civil War Reconstruction, and then she goes to World War II. Currently, for our students, that's where history ends. So we're looking to continue on with that. We do have elective courses that Mr. Langjelli teaches, The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly, that rotate, but not all of our students do that. So what we're looking to do, if you flip your paper over, on the backside, it has all of the topics we're going to look at in Modern U.S. History. So if you look at that in parentheses to the right of all of those topics, it has the, has the presidents, they're going to tie in all that Civics and Government. Although it's laid out as Semester 1 and Semester 2, that is going to be all tied in together. So we're going, all of our students will take that during their sophomore year, where Civics currently is. That's not going to change. We're just going to introduce all of that U.S. history that we're current, we currently don't have right now. And the final course that we're looking at is Partners in Physical Education. What this is going to be primarily is this is going to be a physical education class for our students that participate in the Life Skills classroom. We're also going to include some of our, some of their other classmates from our different grade levels, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. In there, it says there's an interview process because we are going to put a limit on that. The limit's going to be based off of the number of kids we have in our Life Skills program. We're going to have some students coming up from eighth grade up to the high school next year. So I don't know what that number will be right now. So if there's five kids in the classroom, then we'll look to have probably about a total of 16 kids in the class, those five students, and then 10 additional students. And then what we're going to do, what I think about, is I think like our Bachi program, that partnership between all of our students, breaking down barriers, and just us being like a one whole school together. So that's what we're looking at. This was developed by Hope Bennett, one of our counselors, but it is going to be taught by Mrs. Woods. Any questions on any of the courses?
Yeah, Mr. Mott, I have a question about the CHS. If you could just remind me, so the CHS classes, that means then that they're offered through CCBC, and then the parents are paying that per credit rate? Is that how that works?
No, for, for the, for that, that's the dual enrollment, the dual enrollment, that 's for whenever the students would go out, they'd leave our school and go over to CCBC actually, to college and high school. This is a CCBC curriculum provided by them to, in this case, Mr. Langjelli. He just provides that instruction to our students. Our students will get college credit for it, but it is provided here at the high school.
So there's no additional charge?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't, I just think it's great that you're adding history beyond World War II. So much has happened.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And I love the Partners in Physical Education class, created by Hope Bennett, you know, grouping our Life Skills kids.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of unity in our building, like brought forward by like Cafe 116, Bachi, like those programs are really bringing us together as a building, as a school.
Thank you.
Mr. Mott? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What are the materi, if any, materials are needed for these courses? Are we able to get those?
A lot, a lot of our classes, so like I'll just use Mrs. Porter's class, for example, and, and Mrs. Crotchek's class. We do, we, like, we don't have textbooks for them. What they are is, it's create, it's, the material was created by our teachers. And, and that's, that's in a lot of cases. I know that in our math, in our math courses, we have textbooks. But in a lot of our other, like, English social studies classrooms, we don't have textbooks. We have resources created by our teachers.
And I would just say, if there would be a need for any resource, let us know.
Yes, thank you.
Steve, one of these classes intermingle or assist us with the state standards, helping us on statewide testing stuff? Or is it just?
Yeah, I mean, we, there's, there's standards that the teachers will follow for these classes, but there's no state assessment for the social studies classes. Yeah, we're not tested in social studies.
Steve, I have a question. With the CCBC, because they do get a credit, I'm not trying to contradict because you know more than I do, but I'm, I thought like for English and stuff, when you, when you got a credit for it, you did have to pay. It was substantially less, but you did have to pay.
Yeah, let me, let me go, go and double-check that. I know, I know definitely whenever you go out, I'll, I'll double-check that piece, and I'll have that information. And that, I think, I think that might be the case.
But it is discounted, so it's not.
Significant discount. I know that like with our PIT classes, they're, they're like, if you go to PIT, it's a couple thousand dollars per credit, and then it's like, like a couple hundred dollars for the PIT classes.
Right.
So, yeah, so, so now, now in looking back and thinking about that, I do think that you're right about that, Monica, so, yes.
We do have an expert sitting here.
Yeah, Chris, are you paying for that Western Civ?
For two semesters, right? Yeah.
Versus, I think in a lot of schools, it's $900 per credit times three, so significant, it's a significant cost savings.
I have a question related to that, and I know, so my kids did that too and paid for those courses. Do we allow students to take that class and not get the credit? If they just want to get the, they want to be in that class but not have to pay?
Yes, yeah, no, we, we do, we do have kids that do that and don't, don't get the credit. Yeah, so they would just get the grade from the school and not from CCBC or PIT.
I have one additional question as I'm looking, I, I do like to see the extended history on here that gets closer to our time than I thought that it ever would. But my question has to do with, like, as the curriculum, you said the teachers, since there isn't like a resource, a book per se, once the curriculum is, is written and what will be taught, are we able to get a copy of what that education looks like?
Yeah, and I, I know that Bill's going to be talking about the, just the overall curriculum process next, next week, but yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to operations, Ms. Crennagle.
Mr. Mortimer, if you'd like to come up and present your report.
Good evening. At our high school, last month, we did complete up to about 95% of our LED lights in our locker rooms, restrooms, and storage areas. Our maintenance also started installing new LED can lights. We're about 80% complete on our can light installation at the high school. Over the holiday break, we had a fire alarm go off. There was a smoke detector that was triggered due to a faulty ballast. So we just removed the ballast, updated the light fixture to an LED, and we did have to replace the smoke detector, whether you realize we had a fire alarm over Christmas holiday break. I did install a new fan relay block, purchased on eBay for Exhaust Fan F. We did repurpose a relay that I had from the 2012 control upgrade of the heating system here at the middle school. We did test the voltage, the amp draw, and the fan was placed back in service. Our elevator expansion tank, which has failed, is still on order. The elevator, elevator is operational, but it's noisy when it's operating. At our middle school, we just replaced a gauge on the hot water circulator pump today. We isolated the system and then we installed the actual gauge. Over Christmas holiday break here, we started adding additional glycol into our four-pipe system here at the middle school. On the 23rd, they showed up with about 200 gallons, and the other glycol was delayed in being delivered. The glycol temperature was 11 degrees, so we decided not to install that into our very hot boilers on that day. So they came back on the 2nd with additional glycol that we unloaded, installed the warm glycol into our boiler system. They had to come back again another day over the holiday break because their pump wouldn't push the gel glycol into the chilled water system. Once we installed all the glycol, we loaded up the old glycol drums with the hazardous waste, so Rabe could take and get it processed properly. I will have I will have G.O.A. retain a sample and provide us records for moving forward within upcoming week. Actually, I think it's going to be next Friday. At our elementary school, we had to replace an additional mixing valve for our classroom sink in B207 and new supply lines. Preventive maintenance was completed on two of our hot water units, which provided domestic hot water needs for our elementary. We did experience a broken water closet lid in the bathroom in A109 that we were able to replace just the lid. And also over holiday break, we did have a power outage. We lost the operation of the UPS for the middle school HVAC system. We made the repairs, we got the system back online. The elementary elevator required a hard reset along with our fire protection system. And the high school HVAC system control required resetting for proper operation. I had the IT department involved. Once I established permanent power, I notified them. They came over during the break and got all the internet working and everything else also working at the same time for us. Is there any additional questions?
I do. I don't want to bore everyone with it, but the glycol, how much did they bring? And did we have any left? And if we did, do we keep that here?
I was involved, of course.
Okay.
They brought four 55-gallon drums the first day. Then they brought back eight 55-gallon drums for the chilled water system. When we did a quick test of the heating system, when they came back the second day, our numbers were still low. They added additional glycol into the heating system, added the rest of it into the cooling system, and my buffer tanks have, I'd say, 2/3 of the way full of 100% glycol currently. Now, we have to get the glycol to mix, so I have my chilled water system. I have every valve turned open in this building, and I have the pump on manual to mix this glycol before next Friday, so I can get an accurate reading of what our temperature would be on our glycol. The heating system's been running. I did a quick test today. I'm at 31% with my meter on the heating and 33% on the chilled water currently. Those numbers can fluctuate, of course, as we continue to mix the glycol in our system.
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate you taking care of that.
Gary, I'm sure that, I just want to confirm in my mind. So by taking it next Friday, there's, nobody should have any qualms, I'm talking about Rab, that that's enough time for this system to get mixed up? And because I don't want them to say, well, you didn't give it enough time to mix.
No, I feel that's going to give us plenty of time, especially since I have a pump running 24/7 on both systems, moving it throughout our building. There should be plenty of time to get that transferred through the systems. And next Friday, I'm also going to change the filter bags in both the elementary and middle school of our glycol system to see the condition of them.
Okay, then I'm just asking a question. And do you think it's a good thought to send Rab a thing saying, this is what we're going to do come Friday? We're going to check it, we're going to send you the results. Keep them in the loop, so if they have any qualms about that, then they can respond to you ahead of time.
That's not an issue. I was figuring on sending them the results when I received them, which will probably be about three to four days after they take the reading. Because we do want to make sure everyone's on the same page because once it's done, then we'll go back to quarterly testing as we do.
They say notify them ahead, say, hey, our plan is to test them Friday, and we will send, you know, the results that we get. And then you're testing for chemistry and all that too, so if we have to make any adjustments.
Correct, we're testing for alkaline phosphase. We're testing for all of our properties of our glycol to make sure we're within limits. And I could very easily reach out to Rich at Rab and take care of that.
Yeah, the board, we thank you. Thank you and your staff and everything because it's been a lot. And that's what we have here, is, you know, a lot to deal with, and we always appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary. Move to athletics, Ms. Rizzi.
Yes, Mr. Mott's going to present the athletic director's report for January 2025.
Mr. Badamo and Mr. Turpin are up at the high school. They have a basketball game this evening, so he had asked me to present the information. He asked me to remind everyone, the Freedom Athletic page, just continue to check it because times are always changing as far as the dates and the times for our events. Our winter sports update, our boys' basketball team is 1-8. They're 1-3 in section play. Girls' basketball, they're 3-7, and they're 1-2 this year in section play. Wrestling is 2-0 heading into section competition. They have some notable wins over Mount Pleasant and Beth Center. And they were in an invitational at Shar Houston, and they came in 4th place out of 30 teams. So they're really experiencing some success this year. In the MAC tournament, they finished 5th overall, had some pretty significant finishes. In 3rd place, at the 107 weight class, Caden Braun, I believe he is a student that comes to us from New Brighton. First place, Gavin McCray, wrestled, finished first, wrestled at 152 pounds. And then Zayshaun Williams finished first at the 189-pound weight class. So some pretty significant accomplishments for our students. Bachi will be opening at home next week on the 14th. They're 1-1 right now. I believe they tied with Beaver. Yep, and then you guys ended up getting the golden frame. And then our sports, our spring sports update, conditioning's going to be starting pretty soon for our spring sports. So our softball, baseball, and track and field. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Mott.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll move to the action agenda. Item 1, approve release time, professional development. Virginia Ng, 6th grade teacher, Kingdom of the Monarchs Adventure, January 6th to 10th, Mexico, cost substitute. Approve release time, student-staff travel. DECA state competition, February 19th through 21st. Hershey, cost substitute and lodging. Will use school van. Cole Agad, high school social studies teacher, DECA co-sponsor. Miranda Santa, high school math teacher, DECA co-sponsor. Item 3, approve mentors. Approve the following mentors, salary according to contract, clearances on file. Ashley Spencer for Amber Rogers, middle school art teacher. Wendy Klibbins for Brandy Johnson, 5th grade teacher. Approve adjudication. Approve adjudication for disciplinary hearing held on December 18th, 2024. Signatures required. Item 5, approve acceptance and distribution of grant. Approve acceptance and distribution of the Beaver County Educational Trust grant in the amount of $1,000 to Linda Gertie for the elementary story walk. Approve acceptance of gift from alumnus. Approve acceptance of $750 gift from alumnus CJ Arbs of Squire, FAHS, class of 1961. Item 7, approve administrative assistant. Approve Kylie Guanes as administrative assistant to the Director of Building and Grounds, starting salary $31,000, clearances on file. Approve release time for athletics. Approve release time for Zeke Stroop, head wrestling coach, Tyler Albert's assistant wrestling coach, and participating athletes to attend 2025 Mountain Year duels, January 11th and 12th. Phillipsburg, Olseola High School will use school vans. Item 9, accept resignation. Accept resignation of Laura Anteline, head varsity cheer coach, effective January 8th, 2025. Item 10, approve coach. Approve Ashley Harvey as assistant middle school volleyball coach, salary according to negotiated contract. Pending receipt of updated clearances. Item 11, approve revised policies. Approve the following revised policies. 103, discrimination harassment affecting students. Policy number 103.1, non-discrimination qualified students with disabilities. Policy 104, discrimination harassment affecting staff. Policy 336, personal necessity leave. Policy 339, uncompensated leave. Policy 610, purchases subject to bid and quotation. Policy 611, purchase is budgeted. Policy 801, public records. I would like to make a couple comments on a couple of those policies myself. I apologize, these were on the agenda back in November for discussion. I didn't bring up a couple of concerns I had on policies 336 and 339. Personal necessity leave and uncompensated leave. The changes in those policies, among other things, took a board approval out of the policy, changed some timelines. I have a concern about those things. You know, I feel the board should have to prove the uncompensated leave since that requires not only non-payment of salary, but also non-payment of benefits, which can create some difficulties. So I would ask the board to vote no on those. If there can be other questions or comments on those. Anyone have questions or comments? Anything on the action agenda?
Sharon, I had some of the same concerns on those policies as well. I do have a question for Diane. Do you happen to have an update for November and December for the days that we needed subs? In December, you told us that you were going to give us an update, and I didn't get one.
Yes, no, I apologize, I do not have it, but I will get it.
Okay. And also, I have a question about, you told the board, but I have a question of why Ms. Ng is on the agenda when she's already gone? Because we were notified back in November that she won this award. So can you elaborate on what the award is and then explain why it wasn't approved earlier?
So she was notified in November that she, Ms. Ng, was notified in November that she was awarded a Monarch Scholarship Grant, which included a learning adventure in Mexico. Her trip to Mexico was this week. The award notice stated the following here, that you exemplify the ultimate Monarch adventure. Faster, and we decided to take that upper-level, immersive learning adventure. Overwrought. The only thing I can say as to why it was on today is probably found out in December when or what the travel arrangements were going to be. And so this was a good meeting.
Any other questions or comments?
No, Sharon, my only comment, I get to this time, I'd like to make a motion that we table policy 336 and 339.
Mr. Mott, I think rather than just table them, the board can just vote no on them, and they will then remain as they are. That way, they'll just remain status quo.
Well, I was just going to, that's the revised.
Yeah, that way, they'll just remain status quo, and the policies will be in place as they are. And then if the administration wants to rediscuss and resubmit.
Do you want me to make them all, I'll make the motion then to...
No, I think everyone, when they vote, they can just vote. If they want to vote no on those items, they can say that in their vote.
I have one more question. This approve release time, we kind of talked about it before the board meeting, but I wanted to make sure that it's public. The approve release time for Zeke Stroop, I'm just confused as, I don't think that we typically approve these types of things. Bucky, you might remember better than I did. I tried doing a search to see if we have to approve this, so I'm just concerned as to why it's on here? If there's, like, if this is just out of the norm of what they're doing, and this is kind of going over their budget, and that's what we're supposed to do because there's no dollar amount to it, but...
They're only using the school van, so I'm assuming that's the purpose of the... Vans to go out of state. It is an overnight trip. I do recall having some, getting it approved for football coaches to go. Now, there may have been a dollar amount. I think they went to Chicago. I think that was on the board.
I think that...
If it's an overnight trip, for insurance purposes, the board does have to approve, just so that that insurance follows them.
So maybe that's just what's different about this one.
If it is an overnight trip, which I don't know, that's not clear if it is. But is it an overnight, do you know? Because are the students staying overnight, do you don't know? Yeah, I'm going to assume it.
But there also might have been a cost.
I'm going to assume it is, and that's probably the reason it's on is because of the insurance.
Just want to make sure that there wasn't something I'm missing.
It's in Phillipsburg, over near it.
It is near State College out that way, so it probably is an overnight trip. Any other questions or comments?
With that, then we should probably check with Matt to make sure. The biggest thing is when kids go away, the board, if something happens, the first thing that they want to do looks at, did the board approve something? So just cautious-wise, it's better for us to approve it, and then they're covered under our liability insurance policies. But that is really the main function, to protect the students and us if they're outside of the district. But if that's different, then Matt Hoffman can rule on that.
I agree. Okay, I think with the athletes going.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll look for a motion to approve items 1 through 11. Have a motion to approve items in a second. Rule call.
You made the motion.
Chair.
Ms. Rizzi and Ms. Evans.
Emily Evans.
Yes, except for item 11, 4 and 5. Policy 336 and 339 are no.
Sharon Gabbel.
Yes, with the exception of item 11, items 4 and 5.
Monica Gronigal.
Yes, to all except for number 11, 4 and 5, which is the same policies, 336 and 339.
Jen Hill.
Hey, yes for all items except for item 4, approve adjudication. I will abstain from voting on that item as I was unable to attend the hearing. And then, again, it's a yes for all except for 4. And then number 11, items number 4 and 5, policy 336 and 339, we're doing no.
Okay. Gerald Edman.
Yes, except 11, numbers 4 and 5, no on policy 336 and 339.
Michelle Mitchia, I'm going to vote yes with the exception of item 11, 4 and 5. Lizzie Rizzi.
Yes, with the exception of item 11, numbers 4 and 5, those are no.
Dawn Tadko. Thank you.
Thank you, motion is approved. That brings us to the end of our meeting tonight. Any questions? Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I look for a motion to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned.